Good morning, good morning. Today is Tuesday, May 28th. I want to welcome you to City Hall. I want to welcome you to this council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Bonn, and Puscano, Sadio, Haristassen, Weiser, Caress, Krikorian, Martinez, Oferel, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, Rodriguez moves. Krikorian, seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Sadio moves. Bloomingfield, seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and time for the flag salute.
Okay, why don't we all rise? We'll be led today by Ms. Martinez in our flag salute.
Can we all rise? Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very nice.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez, and thank you to all of the young people that definitely know their pledge. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, let's go through the... All right, guys, you're on television. Let's go through the agenda.
Mr. President, there are requests from members to continue items two, nineteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four to June 5th.
Okay, on twenty-three, if it's okay, we'll just refer that back to committee, but we will continue the other items. And for how long are we continuing those items?
Those will be continued to next week, June 5th.
Okay, so without objection. Continue.
And on number eighteen, Mr. President, no action is required, and as much a resolution has not yet been submitted.
All right. Let's move forward.
Then on items one through three, these are items noticed for public hearing.
Do you have cards?
There are... Item two was continued, and there are no cards on one and three.
Okay, let's vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Continue.
Mr. President, items four and five are items for which public hearings have been held. A corrected Plumb Committee report has been submitted and posted for item number four.
Okay, why don't we prepare to move on these items? Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, let's move to the next section of items.
Items six through thirty-four are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to continue. Item twenty-five to come back in thirty days.
Okay, item twenty-five, thirty days would be June twenty-sixth. So ordered.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additionally, Mr. President, there are cards on items nine, eleven, twelve, seventeen, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-one, thirty-two, and thirty-three.
Okay, let's hold those items, and then let's vote on the remaining items. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay.
And, Mr. President, that then takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Bloomingfield, are you ready? Okay, before you start, Bob, it's... I think it's a presidential era here. Item twenty-three needs to be reconsidered. So let's vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, we will hold that for a minute, and then I think it's... Ms. Rodriguez, I think on item twenty-five, I got the numbers confused. We want to refer that back to the committee, and then I will wait to hear how you want to move forward with that. So is that clear? Item twenty-five will be referred back to committee. All right, let's recognize Mr. Bloomingfield.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. So, Mr. President, colleagues, we are here today to recognize Mammonet. Most of you are probably wondering what the word even means. Well, it means "every mother can." Mammonet is a sport initiative that has made a lasting social impact in Israel over the last fourteen years, and it's the largest social sports project in Israel specifically for moms. The Mammonet League was established in 2005 and has since spread to thousands of players across the globe. Their agenda is to promote physical health while providing education, a sports outlet, networking, social gathering, and the building of community. The unique model of Mammonet Israel was adopted overseas in countries such as ours, but also other countries: Canada, Cyprus, Greece, Italy, Austria, and it's spreading to other countries around the world as well. Mammonet is developing a new breed of athletes while positively impacting the women who participate and their respective communities. Before I continue, I want to give you a little video understanding of what this is. So, Franco, if you would please roll the video, and we will see a video to give you a true sense of what Mammonet really is. Attention to the screens.
My name is Ofra Abramovich. I'm a wife and mother of two children. I'm the chairman and the founder of Mammonet. Mammonet is actually a league for mothers. The league consists of almost 7,000 mothers all around Israel. It wasn't easy at the beginning. The words "mothers" and "league" never existed before, and as a mother, it's very difficult to have a time for sport. No one thought that mothers can do something like this. I have to break a lot of walls just to convince them that it's possible, and we can make it in the best way for us. So I went to my mayor of First Abba, and I told him that I want to open a league for mothers. And he told me, "Go away, there is no such a thing." But I didn't give up. I called his wife, and I told her, "Please tell him that we want to have a league for ourselves." Because I was so convinced of myself that it should be and can be, he agreed. I wrote a letter for the principals of all the schools in Israel, and I went to each school and told the parents that there is going to be a league for mothers. At the first time, they come only nine mothers. At the second time, sixteen mothers. And the third time, fifty. And we divide them according to schools. So each mother represents a school that the children is attending. After three months, we have 110 mothers.
The General Assembly will now consider Agenda Item 11, entitled "Sport for Development and Peace." The 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development recognizes the importance of sport as an enabler of sustainable development and peace through its promotion of tolerance and respect, empowerment of women and young people, and its contribution to health, education, and social inclusion.
One sport initiative that has made a lasting social impact is Mammonet, Israel's Mother Catchy Ball League. Founded by an Israeli mother, Mammonet brings together mothers from all ages, religions, and backgrounds to play ball. Mammonet leaves no mother behind. It is not about who can score the most points or who's the fastest, but rather about empowering women by giving them a sense of belonging to a new community with shared goals. Mammonet shows how mothers can serve as a powerful role models within their families and communities by promoting good sportsmanship, teamwork, and commitment to physical health. Mammonet is more than just a sport league. It is also a platform for advancing social causes and community initiatives. Mammonet's unique model is quickly spreading and has already been adopted in Austria, Italy, Greece, Cyprus, and the U.S.
All right. Great video. As you can see, Mammonet allows mothers to relive their youth as athletes or to experience being part of a sports league for the first time. It brings together a diverse group of mothers from all ages, religions, and social backgrounds. In the short time of Mammonet's existence, they have made a tremendous impact right here in Los Angeles and in Los Angeles communities. They have promoted awareness and inclusion through workshops with children with special needs. And in Los Angeles, as a sport, they have grown to now over seventeen teams and over 250 players in less than two years. They are on fire, and they are growing crazily. And at this point, I'd like to introduce the inventor of Mammonet, who came all the way from Israel, Ofra Abramovich, who is the CEO and founder of Mammonet International. Ofra.
Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to thank Councilmember Bob Bloomingfield for making this moment happen. This is a true honor, and I'm thankful for your cooperation. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. It's a great honor. Fifteen years ago, as a mother, I was in a circle of life of being treated my children and my husband and my job and my mother-in-law. I was always busy with something, and I didn't give for myself the attention. And fifteen years ago, I just came for an activity for me. And when I came home from this activity, I found out two things. One of them is that I am responsible for my time as a mother. If I decided something, I put it in my set of priorities first, and then I can achieve it. And the second thing is that I got back to age of sixteen. And for a mother, it's not a very trivial feeling to get back to fifteen, sixteen years old. So the game brings me a lot of adventure and a lot of meaning. And I decided that I can't leave it only for myself because I want other mothers that stuck in the circle of life of giving treatment to others to feel the same as I did. So I went to my mayor of my city in Israel and told him about it. And at the beginning, he left, but when I didn't give up and called his wife and said to her, "Please still tell him about it," he called me for his office. And I explained the specific and very special model of Mammonet, which is the mothers are according to the school that the children are learning. So each school in my city has a team, and we play against each other. And this brings not only games, but a lot of things beyond it. And that, first of all, every mother... And that, first of all, every mother can, so we don't care about her height or weight or religious or how good she is, no prior experiences being checked, but only if you are a mother, you are in. So many mothers that didn't dare to do something for themselves come to this league and they being treated in open hands. And what is important, that our activity is way beyond the net because we're not only playing, but we do a social and a community things. We, we train prisoners in our prison in Israel. And when they go out from prison, we adapt them to our league. So they become part of our community without caring what they have in the past. We treat special needs and we play with them. And we have a senior citizen that we play with. And for me, it's an honor to be here. And I would like to present Galit Peled, who initiated Mammonet in Los Angeles, so we'll tell you about what she has done.
Going to bring up Galit. Just want to say, Galit is someone who, when I was in the State Assembly, I got to know. She, she runs the Northridge Golden Nest, which is an assisted living home for seniors. And she does so much for so many as the CEO of Mammonet L.A. So, Galit.
So I will also begin with the thank you, Councilmember, for making this moment happen. True honor. So, my name is Galit Peled, resident of Encino. I am married with three children. And the one thing that got me excited about Mammonet was the sense of belonging to my community. I saw the opportunity to bring mothers like me together through sport. My team name is Mama Sino because I represent my city. In the short time of existence, we have made tremendous impact in Los Angeles. Agora Hills, Oak Park, Terzana, Woodland Hills, Sherman Oaks, North Hollywood, Encino, and Los Angeles City. We have grown to seventeen teams in two years from just word of mouth. Our goal is to duplicate this model and bring it to all communities around Los Angeles. Mothers as well get involved in such an organization, the greater benefit will be for their kids, schools, and communities. It is our vision that wherever there are mothers, there will be Mammonet that will enhance their health, serve positive model, as well as contribute to building a stronger community. We found ourselves here in L.A. in a couple of community outreach programs. In October, during the Breast Cancer Awareness Month, Mammonet dedicated time and resource and held a tournament at Chatsworth with the message of, we play on the court, but not with our lives. As a mother, we have a social and health responsibility for ourselves and for others. Another program we're involved with is Star Net. Mammonet collaborates with Maga Lim organization, which provide activities and support for younger adults with special needs. We are a social movement. There are lots of sports organizations out there, but only Mammonet has the unique value to make the difference. Mothers bring families, families create communities, and communities make a change. We empower women and give them sense of belonging. In three days from now, May thirty-first, we'll be hosting the second-largest USA Mammonet Cup Tournament for the entire North America leagues. The game will take place at the Mamba Sports Academy. Teams from Boston, Ohio, New Jersey, Portland, and of course, Los Angeles will compete for three days. We invite you all for this amazing weekend. That will make us bigger, better, and a stronger community. I would like now to introduce Mammonet Public Relation Manager, Maya Benfield.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Maya Benfield and I am resident of Agora and a proud member of the Agora Team, Mama Agora. From everything that you heard from the video clip and from my colleagues here, you have seen that in the last two years, Mammonet has been a great success for, almost like as a top prototype, and we are trying to bring it throughout Los Angeles. Looking into the future, we believe that the unique system that was established in Israel, where each team represents a school, is the best way in going by introducing Mammonet throughout L.A. We're looking forward to work with all of you in an effort to open Mammonet's teams according to the model in all the different school districts. There'll be nothing better than opening teams in a school because the schools already provide us with the diversity that we are looking for and exclusiveness. The schools are like a building inventory. Moms are already there, so we already have the players. And at times, we can also have coaches there and the facilities. The benefits will be all around, for the schools, for the mothers, which is the players, and for the families. One of the biggest advantage for the schools is, we always need the facilities. So instead of paying for outside facilities, we can use those funds and invest them in the schools for their gymnasiums. The name of the schools will be the name of the team. For example, my daughter is going to Red Oak in Oak Park and the school, the school name will be Red Oak Mammonet. Another benefit to the school is, the moms that will be part of the teams are more likely to be involved in the schools and activity of the schools. And we all know that the school administration always in need for volunteers. So that's a big plus. Mammonet becomes a family affair. The kids and spouses coming to cheer the moms, moms are role models for their kids, and some older kids will participate as scorekeepers, as well as some of the spouses become coaches. And with all the girls that we have here, all the mamas, we have some personal examples. For example, Estee's husband is a coach. Oralie's son is a scorekeeper and her spouse is doing all of our graphic design. Elena's spouse is one of our team's sponsors. And Galit, our CEO, she brought the whole family in. She's our CEO, she's a player, and she's got her husband and both kids are coaches. So it sure is a whole, the whole family coming and doing it together. Mothers are physically active, which makes them feel better and improve the quality of life for them and for their families. When kids see their moms physically active, they're more likely will want to be active and will spend less time on computer games. And that's all the kids over here, right? And I think we all want to see kids less on computer games and more outside and active. You have already heard about all the volunteer projects that we do. This is a very unique way to show our kids that giving back is very important, that given back to your schools and your community. Mammonet teams and at the schools will foster more friendship and create networking. For example, I was searching for a speech therapist for my daughter and I found one within my Mammonet family. So networking is very important and proven to be very helpful for all of us. The friendships are not just for the moms, it's also for the spouses and the kids. And at this point, I can actually say that this can also help minimize bullying because it promotes community and a mini-support system within the schools, and that's for our kids. As was mentioned by Galit, we have grown to seventeen teams in less than two seasons, just by word of mouth. We are very excited and looking forward to keep growing. And with your support, and we can actually bring Mammonet all around Los Angeles much faster. So we would love to work with all of you. Thank you again, Councilmember Blumenfield. Thank you for this honor, for being here, and thank you for the opportunity to introduce Mammonet.
All right, well, let's, let's give them a big round of applause and I want to give a, give you guys a certificate, a special certificate here. On behalf of the entire City Council.
Mr. Rue, you have a special introduction for us this morning?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. I just want to recognize someone who's been patiently waiting and hearing the meetings, and that is our, our third grade class from Temple Israel, Hollywood Day School. You guys want to stand? You guys could stand, you could see yourself on TV. And they're the ones that did the pledge of allegiance with us. And I want to recognize your teachers. You guys could all stand, third graders, go ahead, stand, wave, wave to your parents, they'll see it on TV. And there, I want to recognize your teachers, Ms. Ilana Hassan and Ms. Aviva Bates Gambitsky. Thank, there you go. Thanks for visiting City Hall and thanks for learning about your local government. Thank you to the third grade class, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Mr. Wesson?
And, and just one more time to the third graders, want you to know you're the best waivers that has ever visited City Hall. Let's give them one more round of applause. Now, it's, it...
Okay, Mr. Wesson, you got them started, so...
Members, uh...
Now you gotta wait.
I'll wait a minute. Let our waivers wave on down the aisle. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a very special group of visitors that are visiting, visiting us from the great country of Japan. It is the Kaidan-Rin Government Trade Association. Let's give them a round of applause. They, they are here today. What we're doing is celebrating the sixtieth year between flights between LAX and, and Tokyo. They're going to be having events with our chamber for the next several days. With me is the Chairman, Chairman Ueki, where's the Chairman?
Me.
Yeah, right here. Let's give the Chairman a round of applause. Not only, not only is he one of the chairmans of this great trade association, he's the Chairman for Japan Airlines as well. And I wanted to present you with a, oops, I messed that up, a welcome certificate to the great city of Los Angeles. Thank you for the partnership that we've had between Tokyo and Los Angeles for the past sixty years. Ladies and gentlemen, Chairman Ueki.
Thank you.
All right. This way.
This right here? Yeah.
Do you want to say something?
Thank you. Yeah. And also, we have the gift for you.
Oh, okay.
This is the Japan Airlines Big Airplane. A present for you.
Thank you.
There's a Boeing seven...
You got your own plane there. What kind of model plane is that? Do anyone know?
I'm a flyer. This is Japan Airlines, I don't know what number...
Boeing seven-seven-seven.
All right. Thank you. Say a few words.
So, thank you, President Wesson, and also thank you very much for having us today. It is a great honor to meet you.
Pleasure.
And I'm Yoshihar Ueki, the Chair of the Kaidan-Rin Committee on U.S. Affairs and also the leader of this delegation and the Chairman of Japan Airlines. And as I, the President shows, I am the Chairman of Japan Airlines and I came to Los Angeles to celebrate sixteenth anniversary of the flight between Los Angeles and Japan. I feel honored that our company has been playing an important role in connecting people between Los Angeles and Japan for many years. Not just my company, but all the companies represented here today are committed to play a proactive role in further strengthening the relationship between California, especially Los Angeles and Japan. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Suri Kurg, you have an announcement?
Yes, Madam President, a member has requested that item twenty-three be continued to June fifth.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order?
Additionally, a member has requested that item number five be sent forth with today.
Without objection, that will be the order as well? Could I just go ahead and go to multiple cards? Mr. Gakkorian, did you have an announcement? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call multiple card speakers. Armando Herman, are you here? Armando Herman is not in the audience. Mike Greenspan, are you here? There you are, Mike, come on up. Mike, I need to remind you, you are speaking on items six through fifteen, item twenty-eight and thirty-two, and your general public comment.
I've only got two minutes.
I understand that, but you're going to get an extra minute as soon as you're done with your, all the items that you filled out cards for.
Don't I get to speak for three minutes? Okay, we got it.
No, we're, so, but you've got to work on, do you remember the, the items you filled out a card for?
Oh, yes.
You do, okay. Very one, go ahead. It's two minutes for your general items that you're speaking on and one minute for your general public comment.
I, I thought, I thought we were speaking for three, that's... What happened to my third minute? Okay.
It's back, we're having problems with the clock.
All right, thank you. Just a little misunderstanding and hopefully we can put that behind us. Mike Greenspan, a brewing butt-kicking Florida Gator, and back to the council, it's good to be back. I know we don't always agree on things, but that's just life. Now, I used to always call in the, the street lightings. As, as we're talking about items six through fifteen, I used to always call in your broken streetlights. I'm just grateful that the ones I called in happened to be on wooden posts because those are easy, easy to replace. If they were the metal posts, those take a long time. But I haven't called in in years. I mean, years, I just have not called in. I mean, that, because these streetlights are great. What can I say? You actually do something right with some good streetlights. It's taken years. See, to me, the, the city limits always meant, when growing up in Florida, you had streetlights once you hit the city limits. And when you got into the county, you were in the dark, literally. But I did, the, uh, streetlights really are one of your best things that you do. I can actually say that, although we pay for them. Now, the rewards, here we go again, items twenty-eight and thirty-two. I don't know what to do. Maybe I should compliment you guys on the City Council for some wonderful LSD because you're seeing stuff that I'm not seeing. You're seeing these rewards getting paid out. I haven't seen them, but then I'm not tripping on LSD and hallucinating. So I have to compliment you as a Gator, you guys have some great LSD out here, better than the stuff that I would see on Dragnet, because in reality, these things haven't been paid. Some of this stuff goes back to a year. After all, if it was so great, why wasn't it already paid? No, I'm not going to do the John Walsh Rest in Peace, snitches, get stitches. I mean, that, that one's just a, a no-brainer, you know? How, how would I describe a no-brainer for our city attorney? Reverend Jimmy Swaggart cheats on his wife in the missionary position. That's a no-brainer for you. But as far as these rewards, yeah, they did a great job on that rogue cop, didn't they? They really paid that one out. Yes, you guys do a wonderful job and, tell you what, I'll take my general public comment.
Okay, great, because I was going to say, you've got to get back on items, so let's go get, give them his one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Mike Greenspan, a brewing butt-kicking Florida Gator? Case number 18, STC VO 1722, Mera Alvarez versus City of LA and Jose Huizar in front of Judge Richard E. Rico, another wrongful termination suit. After all, Ms. Alvarez is a, how would I say, an NPO, no-put-out. And the other woman, Pauline Medina, case number 18, STC VO 311, being heard in the Court of Ruth Anquan. And, of course, the usual suspects, the City of LA and Jose Huizar, being sued for wrongful termination, i.e., Ms. Medina, an NPO, no-put-out. Well, great job, Mr. Huizar, can't you go home to your wife and get some strange?
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Greenspan. Mr. Kocorian?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I'd like to ask that pursuant to Rule 51, that we reconsider the council's last vote on the report by the Budget and Finance Committee relative to the mayor's proposed 2019-2020 budget for the City of Los Angeles, including related motions and resolutions, a vote which was taken up on May 23, 2019, item number one on the agenda, Council File 19-0600.
Very well, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President, we should vote on reconsideration.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that items before us.
Madam President, if there's any additional public comment, this would be the appropriate time to take that up, if there's any public comment on the budget.
Item, public comment on item 17. Are you seeing none?
There are cards on that item, ma'am.
There are? Oh, you're right.
On item 17.
All right, Mr. Previn, you want to come on up? Mr. Previn, it looks like you've filled out cards for multiple items. So, since you're up here, why don't you come on up? You're going to speak on item 17, which you signed up for, item 26 through 28, item 32 and 33, and your general public comment. Go ahead.
Right, it's Eric Previn from Studio City, thank you. I take note that item 17 was the proposed changes to the budget that I saw voted on on May 23rd, so I understand we're reconsidering them, but it does not, for me, undo the blockade that was created from members of the public for addressing those items right here in this room on May 23rd while there was something that amounts to a press conference. The budget is big, 10.6 billion, but the laws are important, and we made a huge push with the appellate court about special meetings, and that was a special meeting, and yet, the people who were here trying to sign up couldn't even get into the kiosk because the clerk is malfeasant, and the Brown Act violation was endemic to this process. So, I'm very upset about it, and I would ask that you put this item onto an agenda where it is noticed properly for the public with 72 hours' notice, and include the various motions which are evidently pinned up on the board somehow, and then when we were told that they were done, they were put back, it's a crazy process, needs to be removed. And, you know, you need to come into compliance with the Brown Act. The whole point of doing something urgently with 24-hour notice is undone by the requirement to have people speak on it. That said, there are some other items on your agenda that I would like to address. The PNC loan, these kinds of $150 million revolving credit line is very quick and fast, and the rate at 2%, 3% looks good compared to the kinds of interest rates folks get, but we don't have a great feeling of accountability or which project these are going to be funded towards. And since the entire city is on fire with escalating costs of living, rent is through the roof, I think you can read the New York Times, the Daily News, and you will be able to see right there in front of everybody that the cost of wages, in other words, what people make is not advancing at the same rate that the cost of living, Bumanfield, is. And it's very embarrassing now. We're not alone, urban cities all over America are losing college graduates and others to other places because they can't opt into the American dream, which is to get a place, you know, buy a house, like Huizar did, and like other people do as they come up and get a job and do well. There's a tragic story about a woman, young attorney, Mr. Faubel, working and cannot afford anything other than a simple box, essentially, and she's okay with not having a dining room or any property, just because she knows that there's no other way. That's not a lifestyle that we want. So, to celebrate the best budget ever when we have pending liabilities for the pension and health on those fire, and LAFD and LAPD, which I talked about 100 times, $1.5 billion is going to cost us an extra, what is it, $35 million, or is it a higher number, 45, in 2022? So, it's not a celebration, it's a great burden, and these legal costs, I don't know where the $20 million for the LAUSD liability cost that we just processed that's going to be coming out of our CRNA money, but nonetheless, our money is going. I don't know, I don't know when, is that going into this budget or next budget? There's a lack of transparency that needs to be improved.
Okay, you're one minute of general public comment?
Yeah, for my general public comment, I was, I was in New Orleans recently, and they have a World War II museum, which is deeply moving in the aftermath of Memorial Day. I think it was the general, but then-President Eisenhower who was talking about how there could be no museum of World War II without acknowledging the Higgins Boat Operation in New Orleans, and that's where I believe the museum sits. It's so powerful, this was a time when Americans finally pulled together, FDR was dragging his feet, as you know, about getting into the war, but when we were attacked by the Japanese in Pearl Harbor, it was an unbelievable galvanizing moment, and folks across this land stepped up, and as I think we all know the outcome, after years of prosecuting a horrific but essential war, you know, we restored good faith. What's so sad today is that there is a lack of cohesiveness in our country and in our city, and, so with that, I would just simply say, thanks to those who died so that we may live, thanks.
Okay, next speaker is Ryan Farce, are you here? Okay, Ryan, give me just a second, you're speaking on general public comment, and you filled out cards for number nine, 11, and 12, item 17, and 26 through, 28, and 31 through 33. Go ahead.
I, sorry, I wanted to start on number 17, is that correct?
That's one of the items you filled out a card for, correct.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, honorable council members, my name is Ryan Rezo Farce. I am a Los Angelian, California-born, natural United States citizen. I'm here to talk on number 17, among other items. So, let's start with 17, it's a very important one, it's the one I've been coming up here and talked to you guys about for a long time. I'm sure the city clerk could tell you, and the city attorney, and a lot of the other council members in other cities, I'm talking about the same thing, is the balanced budget. So, the mayor has proposed a budget for 2019 and 2020, and it's right here, they talk about it for six sentences, but they don't really go in detail about it. So, my question is, are we running a balanced budget, or how much more debt do we issue every year to keep that balanced budget or keep Los Angeles going? I've had this question for the last year-plus for the city clerk, I asked her, how much debt did you issue on behalf of the shareholders of Los Angeles and California and every patron that passes through Los Angeles that pays you taxes? And no one's given me any answers, she said that she does not have this information. So, I said, how do you, where is this information? She said, it's not in my possession. I said, but you're the clerk, so how is it not in your possession? So, my question to you guys, I believe your budget is around $9 million, or $9 or $10 billion a year? Is that a balanced budget for this year? Is it going to be balanced next year, maybe, or in two years? What's the plan on that? So, that's the main question on that one. Now, I'm going to go back to the beginning on 1 through 3, number 4. My yoga teacher's son and his kids went to Buckley School, so I'm a fan of Buckley School, the private school over there, and I want you guys to determine exactly what the, what the item says, and to resolve to deny the appeal filed by the Vivian Gombardier on behalf of the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association, and thereby sustain the decision of the director of the city planning. So, on that one, and then we go back to these street lighting that Mr. Previn was talking about. Street lighting is very important, I guess $44 million importance, so how many streetlights is that, ladies and gentlemen? How, Mr. Kocorian, what does $44 million in streetlighting budget give you in streetlights? It's about $250,000 a streetlight, in my opinion, so. Now, I'm going to go to my general public comment, I'm here to talk to you about something very important. Again, my name is Ryan Rezo Farce. The report came from United Nations that 1 million species face extinction. Up to 1 million plant and animal species are on the verge of extinction with alarming implications for human survival, according to United Nations report released on May 6th. According to the report, more plants and animals are threatened with extinction now than any other period in human history, and that's because of the human activity that's reckoning the havoc in the kingdom, and existing living things, including us. So, I delivered this stuff to the city on Friday, I wanted to give you guys a little bit of enlightenment, the highest golden rule is to forgive, that's what a father does, he forgives. So, I've forgiven my HOA, my HOA attorney, and I forgive the secret works of one auto hider against America, against all Americans. God bless America, land of the free, helm of the brave, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Our next speaker is Arnold Sachs, are you still here, sir? Mr. Sachs, you're going to speak on items 31, 11, 12, 27, and item 17, and your general public comment.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
So, yes, thank you, good morning, Arnold Sachs. So, item 27 refers to funding. This is an ethical question, so everybody shut your ears. Until you decide what you're going to do with the marijuana sales tax that you're raking in by the truckload, about 60 million a month, between the sales tax and the, you know, you laugh about it, Mr. Price, how much you making at your outlet? How much you making at yours, Mr. Kocorian, between the sales tax and the excise tax, it's about 60 million? You should have an idea of what the heck you're spending money on. A personal service contract in item 31 refers to the service contract being with the 15th Council District. So, who has oversight over that? It's a district, it's not a person that's putting out the contract. Ethics there, you know, another ethical question. 11 and 12 refer to hearing dates. So, public hearings, Mr. City Attorney, are those public hearings that they're going to have? Because that's an ethical question, because public hearings are supposed to be open to the public, yet we're only limited to three minutes on the agenda. Public hearings should be different, they should be excluded from the agenda in that term. What else did I hold here? Oh, oh, by the way, I wasn't sure with 11 and 12, because when the county did its math about Sunshine Canyon landfill, they said 6 times 11 is 66, and 6 times 12 is 66. I guess it was a power play there, so I'm not really sure, because I heard in a Public Works Commission meeting that they were going to use accounting for a contract, very concerned about that, and still they go on and on. And then, we have, let's see, so 11, 12, 31 is personal service, 27 is funding, remember, find out what's going on with the marijuana tax. Oh, and, public hearing, public comment, ethics in the city council. Now, if there's not a bigger oxymoron in the world, I don't know what is. Mr. Kocorian was talking about how unions are being right-wing and not being allowed to vote, or some bullshit, and so it got me thinking, although I was a little late, about Mr. Garcetti's Papa, Papa Spaghetti, and his Supreme Court case that he held, had in Washington, that essentially was, Sabalos versus Garcetti was a county case, and essentially the county won. And in so doing, it said that the county government, and/or governments in general, can actually lie to the public. That was a Supreme Court ruling, and look who was in government? Nancy Pelosi, the senators from California, all the city council, Herbert, you were in government, weren't you? Lying to the public, that's all about what? Black, oh, black, black, no, it's no power, it's just lying to the public, check it out.
Do you want your general public comment, Mr. Sachs?
Oh, I kept...
Yeah, come, I'm here to remind you, you've got one more minute.
No, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, we'll go back to that, because, oh, Catch 22 has just been, is going to be released on Hulu, HBO, or some one of those pay-for-puke channels? It's not really a book about war, it's a book about the insanity of government, because here on one hand, the government says we need money, 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 money. How many people came before the council budget hearing? 600, 400, 200? Only, nobody said anything about the marijuana sales tax, nobody said anything about the marijuana excise tax. So, again, Mr. Kocorian, you're the budget whiz, or just a whiz, how much money is it? Don't you have an idea how much you're raking in from your dispensaries? I mean, you're getting rent, all the council members, Mr. Huizar, council members getting rent from your dispensaries, because we know you're first in line to get anything that's free, and you don't have any idea how much is in the budget. Why don't you speak up there, Mr. Sidi, you're holding your breath.
Thank you very much, Mr. Previn. Okay, that concludes speakers on item, Mr. Sachs, you're done, thank you. Thank you very much, have a good day. That concludes speakers on item 17. Mr. Kocorian, would you like to speak on that item again before we vote?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam President, and just to be noted for the record, Madam President, during the Budget and Finance Committee's hearing of the budget, over 300 speakers had an opportunity to come and offer public comment over the course of seven sessions. On Wednesday, May 22nd, this council opened up the Budget and Finance Committee report for public comment that was taken. The budget and all associated motions has been available at www.clerk.lacity.org, it's available now for anybody who would like to see it. We took public comment today on reconsideration of those matters as well, and then when we take up the budget resolution, which is actually the vehicle by which the budget is approved and enacted, we will take public comment here again. So, I just wanted to make sure that that record was clear in light of some of the comments that had been made during the last few speakers. Mr. Sachs is disrupting the meeting, is interrupting me in the middle of the sentence.
It's your last warning, Mr. Sachs, please take a seat. Please continue, Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Madam President. So, with that, Madam President, I would like to move that we approve the Budget and Finance Committee report as amended, and that amending motions numbered 1, 5, 9, 12, 14, 19, A and B be approved, that all the remaining motions, motions numbers 2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 13, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 20 be referred to the Budget and Finance Committee, and that the council adopt the motion by Council Member Smith to instruct the Transportation Department to report on the potential budgetary impacts that AB 516 would have on parking citation revenues and any other associated revenues.
Okay, I will second that. Let's go ahead and vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you. We're going to send it forthwith. Okay, let's go ahead and go back to speaker cards, Mr. Barb Browns, are you here? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on some items on reconsideration. Item 6, did you want to read them?
Yes, Madam President, and that would be reconsideration of the awards, and that would be for items 6, 7, 8, 10, 13, 14, and 15.
Okay, those items are now for reconsideration, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, those items are now before us, let's go ahead... Okay, those items are now before us. Let's go ahead and vote on them. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
To our eyes.
Madam Clerk, per Councilmember Huizar, let's go ahead and bring up items number 2 and 19 for reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
To our eyes.
Okay, those items are now before us, members. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
To our eyes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining balance, which is items 9, 11, 12, 26, 27, 28, 31, 32, and 33. Let's open the roll. Yes, Mr. Huizar?
Item 9, if we could receive and file, please.
Very well.
Would that be a separate vote, or, yeah?
Yes. So let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the votes.
To our eyes.
And then if we could vote on item 9 as received and filed?
Let's go ahead and open the roll, close the, open the roll on number 9 to receive and file that item. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the votes.
To our eyes.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on closing multiple speaker cards. We're going to move on to general public comment. Inger Dodson, are you here? You want to come forward? And John Niederbach, are you here? Ralph Byrne? Is there a Ralph Byrne here? Go ahead, you have one minute of general public comment.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Inger Dodson, and I represent a nonprofit organization entitled the Reason for Inaudry. That's the acronym T-R-F-E. You can reach us at our domain. Our goals are to implement safety measures and provide proper training for personnel and defibrillators at all Los Angeles County parks that have public swimming pools. Who are we? We are a nonprofit organization that educates the public and children of the dangers of public swimming pools at Los Angeles County parks. Through donations, we implement safety measures and defibrillators at all Los Angeles County parks that have public swimming pools. I lost my son to a drowning in 2013 at Jesse Owens Swimming Pool in Los Angeles, California. I strongly believe that if defibrillators were available at the time, that my son would probably still be here with us. I thank you for having me here, and I wonder if there's anything that the county can do to support my organization. I would greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Did Ralph Byrne, are you Ralph Byrne? Sir, in the back, are you Ralph Byrne? Go ahead, sir.
Good morning. My name is John Niederbrock. I am the Chief Operating Officer of the Pacific Southwest District of the Lutheran Church, Missouri Senate. Last week, the Planning Department let us know that an application had been submitted to designate our property at 10915 Strathmore City Historic Cultural Monument. Pursuant to Government Code Section 37361, the church hereby objects to monument designation and all city historic preservation regulations. We hereby determine that if the application is approved, the church will suffer substantial hardship, which is likely to deprive the church of economic return on its property, the reasonable use of its property, and the appropriate use of its property, and the furtherance of its religious mission. Under California law, religious organizations are entitled to an exemption of their property from local historic preservation's law if the religious organization objects to such designation in a public forum. Thus, I am here as a formality. Only the Planning Department and City Attorney are aware we are doing this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Is there someone here with a last name Harris? Harris, no one's here with that last name. Nancy Klein? Nancy Klein? How about R. Rodriguez? Seeing none? Go ahead, sir.
How's it going? I like your whole getup. It's great. Hazard Park in, I think that's Huizar area. Your reputation precedes you, by the way. The bathroom's like welded shut. I guess I'll use my minute on bathrooms, so we can put a bullet on it. The bathroom's welded shut. There is no water fountain. I'm from West LA. In West LA, the bathrooms are open and the water fountains work. Also, in Santa Monica, when you go to Santa Monica, Sidil, what's up? The bathrooms are open like at night, like Santa Monica Pier, those things, like, I don't know where, you're basically compelling people to, like, relieve themselves on the street if you know there's homeless people, and then you close the bathrooms at 10 o'clock. I think maybe some genius could do some type of, like, public bathrooms that are open longer than working hours or whatever. The digestive system does not obey the working hour clock. Thank you for your consideration.
Yes, Mr. Huizar?
Sir, there's several community meetings coming up about some money we found for, we have, for improving that area. You could go to them, look on my social media, you'll find the dates. There's three or four coming up. You could give your input on that. Thank you.
Mr. Sidil?
Along those lines, there's a motion that we've put forth from my office. We want an assessment and an inventory on restrooms throughout the city at every public space. It's appalling and absurd that we would weld shut the doors of public restrooms throughout the city. Just absurd, and it's been brought to our attention, and so we thank you for bringing that to our attention, and an update on what we're doing.
Thank you both for, for setting the record straight. Any other, there are no more speakers in general public comment. Madam Clerk?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred members, are there any announcements? Seeing none, can we all rise for adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions to my right? Adjourned motions to my left? Seeing none. Have a great afternoon. Our meetings are adjourned.
I'm Dr. Shin. I'm acupuncturist and a herbal expert. When I was 18 years old, after graduating high school, I followed my grandfather to learn herbal medicine and acupuncture, because less side effect and it works better, and more and more people like herbal and acupuncture. The TC herbs in the house, we offered about 1,000 different herbs, shipping from the port of La Sandras imported from China. Some herbal is for the relief of the pain, some herbal for the, like, detox. This ginseng is improve the body energy, enhance your immune systems. Hasenberry is good for the cardiovascular health, so reduce the, balance the cholesterol circulation of blood. We also have herbal capsules, herbal tea, herbal essential oil, and herbal tablets, pills. Shin Clinic is treated for patients with acupuncture, herbal medicine, and Tui Na, we call it Chinese massage, and Moxibing, Guasa, Cupping, and we do exercise, like a traditional style, Tai Chi. When I'm not at work, my hobby is take a photograph for the nature and the bird and the mountain landscape. My specialty is the infertility patients. They're after herbal and acupuncture. They have baby naturally. That's my treasure, to see patients get a result. I wanted this herbal and acupuncture medicine to spread all around the world.